We're really well called, 464, 2017. We take the indication.
Yes, sir. Let us pray. Dear Father, God, thank you for life, health, and strength. Thank you, Father God, for this day. Thank you for this opportunity to share in this board meeting. I pray, Father God, that you would bless all of our board members from each district. I pray also, Father God, that you would bless our superintendent, those that are in his cabinet, all of his subordinates, all the certified and qualified staff, this school system. I pray, Father God, that we would do things in order tonight. I pray that we do things that will benefit everyone that's affiliated with this school system, near and far. And I pray in the name of Jesus that everything will work for the good of those that love the Lord, who is called according to his purpose. And we realize, Father God, that you have a purpose for every individual within this school system. Let us continue to do things that will strengthen all of our students. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I would mention a different question if we here would not be on the panel. Yes, sir. You need to go back to the gym if I would be over. Would you need a motion?
I say, please.
Chris Johnson, Chris Miller, Tony.
Yes, sir. On our agenda tonight, the first item that we have is, we have Barry Bloom here from Coffey Regional Medical Center. I met with Mr. Bloom recently, and we discussed a new tax credit that the state is offering hospitals and citizens of the state of Georgia an opportunity to contribute to the hospital through a tax credit. And so, I thought that after listening to Mr. Bloom's presentation and the information he shared with us here at the office, that it would be beneficial for the board to hear about this opportunity for citizens to take advantage of this tax credit going towards the hospital. Mr. Bloom, if you would come forward and explain this process to our board and society.
I'm going to take a second. I'm going to date you with a little paper. I do greatly appreciate your time. As Dr. Lee said, I did have the opportunity to come and speak with him and Mike, and appreciate their time as well. In 2016, the Georgia Legislature started discussing the issues and concerns about the frailty of the network for community rural hospitals. And that came on the heels of seven rural hospitals closing their doors as a result of reduction in reimbursement and the inability for them to continue to carry on the care of their community. With that being said, they put together a program very similar to the Golden Dome Program on the education tax credit side that provides funding for rural hospitals via contribution by individuals that have some sort of Georgia tax liability, state of Georgia tax liability. That went into effect January 1, 2017. Unfortunately, the state legislature used a definition of rural of being counties that had a population of 35,000 or less. If you know Coffey County, our population is 44,000. Therefore, we did not qualify for this tax credit. Upon realizing that, we kind of put things in gear to go up and talk to folks in Atlanta. We were able to speak not only to the authors of the bill, obviously not only to our local legislators, but we're able to get with folks from the Health and Human Services Committees on both the House and Senate side. And with all that said, we were able to let them know that the definition of rural was not applicable. All they needed to do is come down to Coffey County and look around, and they definitely understand that we are rural, that we have the same issues and concerns of those counties that have a population of 35,000 or less. And we were able to get that legislation changed in January of 2017 in that legislative session, moving that definition of rural up to 50,000. So, effective January 1, 2018, Coffey Regional Medical Center and Coffey County itself can now participate in the Georgia Hospital Rural Tax Credit Program. What that provides is it provides individuals the capability of making donations to their local rural hospital. And those donations then are eligible for a tax credit up to 90 percent of their donation. There is caps. If you're single, married filing, or a single or head of household, there's a $5,000 cap as long as you have at least $5,000 worth of tax liability. Married filing jointly, that now is a $10,000 cap for that filing status. Again, relative based upon the amount of tax liability you have available to you. The way that the system works is there is an application, which is a page within your packet. It's a very simplistic application that's online. You fill out that application after January 1, 2018, basically given your demographic, your filing status, which hospital that you are wanting to make your donation to, and what the dollar amount is. That then goes to the Georgia Department of Revenue. They approve that application, and within 30 days, you get a response back to them allowing, or notifying you that that's been approved. Within 60 days of receiving that approval letter, you then submit your donation to the hospital. The hospital thereby notifies the Georgia Department of Revenue where you received the donation, and a tax credit certificate is mailed out to the donor. That then is applied to their tax return, and they then get that amount of tax taken directly off the bottom of their tax liability. So, for an example, if after you had completed your Georgia tax return, you had $7,000 worth of tax liability that you still owed, if you had that tax credit, $5,000 if you were single or head of household would come off the bottom, leaving you thereby with a $2,000 payment. So, it's a significant opportunity. I think the biggest aspect of it is that it allows individuals to know where their money's going. These are dollars that are already spent. You're going to be paying them normally to the Georgia Department of Revenue for your Georgia taxes, but instead now you can know that they are going and staying locally with your local healthcare organization and providing the care for the community that the community needs. We have four major programs we're emphasizing as part of the tax credit program. Those are mother and baby services, surgical services, cardiac services, and oncology services. All of these are areas that currently individuals have to go elsewhere in many cases to receive care. On the mother and baby side, our building is 20 years old. We're trying to refresh some of the facilities there, but more importantly, we're trying to enhance the neonatal capacity of our facility. Many babies that are at risk, mainly premature babies, or babies that are born with some sort of congenital issues, have to be shipped elsewhere, and we're trying to enhance our neonatal services so that they can stay actually in Coffey Regional, provides that capability of family to be at home, not traveling, and stents goes away that goes along with that, and obviously just the concern of being away from your family, other family members as well. On the surgical services, we are blessed to have a very robust surgical program. However, there are some items that we cannot do here locally, and we're trying to see about enhancing some of the equipment as well as skill levels of our practitioners to be able to address those items, again, keeping patients home. We've been blessed to have a brand-new cardiac cath lab at Coffey Regional. However, there are some needs that we need in order to be able to bring us up to the level of being able to actually do heart stents at Coffey Regional versus those having to be shipped elsewhere. Again, I think most folks realize that that's probably the major area which we send people elsewhere for, are those heart stents, those cardiac issues. And last but not least, and probably the area that most people have been touched by in some way, is cancer. And we have just hired a new oncologist, Eric Anderson, comes to us from Valdosta. And Eric is in the process of establishing a heart center at Coffey Regional Medical Center. He currently has an office, and he's currently doing chemotherapy infusions within the walls of the hospital itself. The goal is to be able to combine his office and that infusion center together in a true heart center, all right, I'm sorry, oncology center. And that's what the goal is. And we all know, on the cancer side, you know, when you have to go for chemotherapy treatments, it's pretty easy to get in the car and head down there and have your treatment done. That trip back is murder. And that's what we hear the most, is the difficulty of that travel, the inconvenience, the cost, but most of all, just the discomfort that is related to the patient themselves. So, if they're able to do that here, they're a matter of a few minutes away from home. It takes away those issues. There are a couple of scenarios that I put into the package. In fact, Clement Stewart Purvis put together a pretty simplistic model there in regards to the tax credit itself. Keep in mind, the donation you make applies to a Georgia tax credit, but it also is a charitable contribution on your federal tax return as well. So, when it rolls through both the Georgia and the federal tax returns, I think the first scenario they have is an income level of about $80,000. And as a result, that individual would, could make a $3,000 donation to capitalize on their tax credit and eliminate their tax liability. And that tax, that donation to take advantage of the tax credit would end up costing them $31 after it rolls through both the state and federal tax returns. So, you can donate $3,000 to your local hospital, and out of pocket, it's $31 for the donor. When you look at the second scenario, it is for a high-income donor. That takes advantage of the alternative minimum tax. Individuals that are usually of high income have to pay an additional tax called the alternative minimum tax. The tax credit offsets that. And although I don't believe the legislators had in mind what actually occurs, but it actually provides an income. It makes money for that individual to make that donation and offset the alternative minimum tax. So, those are kind of the, a couple of approaches that Clement Stewart Purvis looked at. There's another much more involved analysis there as well, and they all came to the same conclusion. Some are, one's just a little more in-depth than the other. I, that's really the tax credit in general. Open for questions if anybody has any? If not?
I'd just, I'd like to make the point that, you know, the reason I felt like it was good to have Barry come talk to you all is our teachers and our school system. If we have good healthcare here in our community, then that's good for our children, number one, and it's also good for our employees, and it's somewhat of a benefit our employees to have good healthcare here in Coffey County. It's good for the whole community. So, I just felt like it was something worth sharing with the board about what we've been experiencing.
Yeah, we try to, as a school system, grow this community as much as we possibly can. As a school system, the two things that people look at when they come to town, and Barry knows as much as anybody, is your educational system and your hospital, or your healthcare services. And so, anything we can do, because we are the largest employer in this county outside of them, you know, if this is something that our people can say, hey, I would rather give my tax dollars to our local hospital than just send it to Atlanta, to me, that's a win-win. Also, you have a lot of people who, you know, really want to be more charitable and donate and do things, but they really don't know how to do it. But, you know, if you can do this and say, hey, for $31, I can put $3,000 into our hospital, then that's something that's worth looking at. And I think that's something that a lot of people would be in the rest of the year. And hopefully, they'll take you up on it, and we can get that thing moving in a good direction and help it out. Well, it's a win for everybody.
Well, I agree with you 100 percent. You know, the hospital is an integral part to the community itself. Those seven communities that unfortunately lost their hospital are but a shell of what their community used to be, just for the fact of the economic engine. Not to go too far beyond, but Coffey Regional provides $163 million worth of economic impact to Coffey County itself. And, you know, obviously, that's important. But I think most important is we are the safety net. We are where people, at that major time of need, where they end up coming and trying to obtain that care, and whether they can pay for it or whether they cannot, we're there. In 2017, we're on track to basically contribute, write off about $33 million worth of vintage of care. So, we are there for everybody, and we desire to continue to be there for everybody, but even to be able to do so on a much broader level. So, that's really what our goal is. Thank you so very much. I appreciate your time.
We appreciate it. Next on our agenda, we have the minutes from our previous meetings in September. Any questions or comments or amendments we need to make to the minutes? If not, we will place this on the consent agenda for the regular monthly meeting following this meeting. Monthly financial report. First, you'll find the monthly financial report, September 30, 2017, summer. Are there any questions about this document?
Still running about $3 million here.
Yes, sir. On the comparison report.
About $3 million.
We have a fund balance ending September of $7,908,084.65. There's no questions about that, but we'll go to the detail. Any questions about this detail? Page of document. Mr. Dreuson, comments on this?
Yes, sir.
Then you'll find the SPOS. If you go back the last six months, our collections have been up over the previous year and month. Each one looks good. If there's no questions about any of these, we will place these on the consent agenda for the regular monthly meeting. Mr. Chairman, I've prepared a construction update for the board. You'll find the construction update on the projector, and it's also in your electronic packet. We'll scroll through this update. The first item that we have on there is the Nichols Settlementary School. You'll see on the, over there, that's, this is the, where the parents will drop off. When you come in, coming in right there, there'll be a drive coming in. This is the side of the school, the side facing. It's actually June Nichols. Yes, sir. All right. If you want to go to the next slide. All right. Bus loading, this is on the other side. So, if you, this is on the parent drop-off area, and then this is on the other side of the building. There will be a bus loading. And that, they're almost ready to pay you all that out there.
They're getting ready for the curbing now.
All right. So, students will be dropped off right there and then enter the building. That's the student rest, one of the student restrooms. It's just a corridor with water fountains right there. You'll see the walls have already been painted. This is just one of the classrooms, and that's a student workstation over there where they'll have computer units on those desks. Thank you. It's a corridor, you'll see the fresh paint, and the Sealatex is already in, and the lighting. This is one of the hallways that they've probably already floored by now, I would think. The flooring's still in right now. Another corridor, that's the media center over there where those members are at. These are office areas right over there. You've got the media center. Just another corridor. This is the gym. You'll see they already got the goals up. Ceiling is complete, lighting's up, painting's done, so it's getting close to completion. Cafeteria, of course, they haven't put in the Sealatex yet. Still working on that. And then this is that, that we started with, the slide that we started with, the parent drop-off pickup area. But all the facades are done, paving could be going on. It could be started anytime. So, you were out there today, Chan? It was like they were, with already four in the...
They've got the, they're putting forms up in the curbing.
Right.
I think they're things are created.
This is the Performing Arts Center. They're still basically working on these large footings that they're putting in with lots of steel and concrete. This was taken last week. Just a lot more steel going in the dirt. They actually, that, that work there, that footing goes down, and they've already poured some footings at the very base of it, haven't they, Mike? And then this is what's exposed here, really goes down about six or seven feet. Would that be corrected? And then there's, but there's a lot that's buried right here that you don't see. So, that was the Performing Arts Center. A lot of the skill is somewhat underground at this point. CMS walkways, this is coming out of the school there. If you take a right, you'll go right down the covered walkways. That's an angle from the drop-off area. So, when students are dropped off now and picked up at Coffey Middle School on this side of the school, they'll be under, under the covered walkway.
You're going to have to place a few of those posts up there.
You think so?
Yeah, 'cause I thought I'm going to hit a couple of them.
No. They are right there. My mirrors are just like, I'm trying not to hit a teacher in the middle, and I got the post on this side now, and it's a little bit of a gamble, but I can just see it coming off. Yeah. Hopefully not.
I might have to buy a couple of those.
Have to get some kind of big stopper there or something.
That camera makes it look nice, so why? That line is not near as wide, that camera makes it look.
The, that's another angle there. West Green Shelter, when we had the storm, that got damaged, it was destroyed. That's been replaced. And then we have the drop-off shelters there, walkway covers, another angle. And that's the last angle of the West Green. They can drop off under cover now. So, thank you, board members, for allowing these improvements to happen, and I would like to thank our taxpayers for supporting these blocks, because all of that work was done with these blocks dollars, and we couldn't have done it without that. So, thank you. Out-of-state travel. We do have some out-of-state travel basketballs to approve tonight. This will go on the consent agenda for the regular monthly meeting. Family Consumer Science Group is going to Washington, DC. Nigerian TC to Jacksonville. Jasmine to Orlando. Science is going to Jacksonville. King Carter Group. Little School Band is going to Emerald City. They will do a performance at Shipwreck Island Waterpark. And people from Westside is going to Jacksonville Zoo. If there's no objections, we'll place that on the consent agenda for the regular monthly meeting. SRO agreement. We are still in, working with the county on completing this agreement. I'm not ready to ask the board to approve this tonight, but we are still trying to work through the details of the SRO agreement. So, we're going to ask the board to allow that sit for another couple of weeks, and we'll come back at the November board meeting, and hopefully ask the board to approve the final agreement. Strategic plan resolution. We have a resolution here that we're asking the board to approve, and we'll talk more about this at the regular meeting. But this is the resolution that we're asking the board to approve. Whereas the Coffey County Board of Education, believing in the power of we, must continue to build trust and support for public education, engagement in community for the public schools, rewarding educational experiences for all students, increase high school graduation rate through appropriate rigorous and relevant curriculum for new generation learners, board net aligning our systems, continuing some proven efforts for advanced accreditation to a division project recommendation, state accountability system, CCLPI, and charter system contract. Therefore, let it be resolved, Coffey County Board of Education Superintendent hereby pledge support for working ahead in the forward next generation strategic planning process. We'll ask the board to approve that as an agenda item at the regular meeting, and I don't have a few words to say about it. Our principals, we've asked all of our principals to be here at that meeting, just so that when we ask the board to direct us to strategically plan, you'll be asking the entire administrative staff to develop a new five-year strategic plan for the school system. You do have, at your, at your seat, you have a magazine that the Forward Next Generation Learning Group publishes each year. It's their annual report, and it describes some of the work going on in different school systems across the country. So, in your free time, whenever you have a minute, please thumb through this and check this out. We will be involved with them, so there's a good chance that next year, they'll be highlighting the work in Coffey County Schools here in this publication. We're going to have a meeting, community-wide meeting, on November 6 at Coffey Middle School. You all have been invited, and if you can come, please come. We're going to ask community members throughout Coffey County to provide input as to what they would like to see happen with the Coffey County School System. This will be a chance for us to have a community conversation and get input from everybody. We have a couple policies, or three policies, the field trips and excursions. I knew we had a question about the out-of-state travel. I met with our staff at the office that we talked about, Transportation Director and the other directors. I met with our staff at the office, and we talked about transportation director and some of the other directors. Central office, Dr. Banks, myself have talked about it, and Drehus, myself have talked about it. And the idea of out-of-state travel going for the board. We have come to the conclusion that we would like to continue to ask the board to approve out-of-state travel. Dr. Banks did do a study of cities that were within two hundred fifty miles of, of Coffee County, if you want to look at that. And I appreciate you taking the effort to, to do that, and I think Robin helped with that. But at this time, we feel like we would like to continue to ask for board approval on out-of-state travel. We just think it's good practice that keeps everybody in to know what routes to go or where.
Now, that's fine. I just, you know, we had talked about it earlier. I just want to make sure there was a reason why we would do it, and I mean, but if there's good reasons, people feel more comfortable with us, I pray the days I'm finding it. Just want to make sure there was a good reason why we would do it.
I did leave this policy on the agenda because there's some cleanup we need to do to it. We have on here like C R C T, and, and the system's not, the state doesn't support, doesn't use C R C T anymore. So we'll probably come back to the board with some recommendations to clean it up. So once I got to looking at it, there's some things in it that need to be, need to be cleaned up anyways. So we'll take the next month, from an instructional standpoint, Dr. Evans, if you'll look through it, and let's see if there's any items that need to be changed or amended. And Dr. Banks, he'll look through it also, and then we'll come back to the board. We just clean it up and making sure what's in it is actually what we're doing. For like C R C T, I would suggest we just take C R C T and just put state tests. Yeah. Things of that nature. I know that's minor, but... The next policy that we're putting on the, the table for review over the next thirty days is J B C School Admissions. Dr. Vickers has been reviewing this, and she asked that we bring this to the board for review. We're not asked for any changes tonight, but we didn't want to bring this before the board lets know that we're going to be working on it to make some changes. Once again, some of it involves things like terminology that's used in the policy that is not used anymore. But we'll bring back the board some details on this next month and some recommendations. And then also, there's a policy, J B C C A, Student Assignment Schools, that we're going to be reviewing. And still, the students are enrolled in my county. And we'll be coming back to the board. With suggestions on this policy. The next item, any questions? Next item on the agenda is local supplement. I just wanted to bring this up briefly tonight, that we had, as we moved through the budget process last spring and into the summer, and we asked board to approve the budget. We talked about seeing where we closed out fiscal year after seventeen, and then revisiting local supplements moving forward. So just put this on the agenda as an item to, to discuss moving forward. Maybe something we will talk about in future meetings, but I did want to bring it up. I know last year we, we had done a three percent one-time local supplement for all employees. And then we came back this year because the state changed the certified staff salary schedules. We adjusted that high to two percent. The states adjusted the salary schedules, and then we included a one percent local supplement to ensure that everybody kept that three percent that we had last year. But just wanted to bring that up as an item to discuss tonight, possibly, and then moving forward. Any comments about that?
I talked a little bit today about this, you and Mr. Dowd, and then I spoke to Brian, and, and, you know, my thing is, the last couple of years, our budget has, I guess, been getting better. But I'm always worried, I like to see it getting there before I'm really comfortable going a different direction. And so we, we've done some, what I would call a temporary, you know, we felt like we could do it this year, we don't know what we'll be able to do this, next year. Some things like that. And that's kind of what I've been, you know, I've been told this is kind of something similar to that. My whole point is that I think we're at a point now where I feel more comfortable with our budget. I would like to see us try to do something that's, I guess I'm saying, a permanent, something that's worked in there, something that will not, you know, just my opinion. You know, I, I just, you know, I don't have a problem with us trying to, you know, get some more money moved out there. I would just like, kind of, I would rather take the temporary status and say, let's try to work towards getting something more per, something that they know's there, we know's there, and we don't have to decide every year we're going to be able to do this, do that. Like I said, just my opinion, we talked about it. Don't have any problem, you know, trying to get our salaries where they need to be or what have you. But I, I would just like to say, work towards something more of a permanent status instead of, you know, continuing to try to do temporary stuff. And again, and, and I told, and I mentioned this today, when we do temporary stuff, it tends to, you know, it's hard to not keep it. So if you're going to go that route, you know, let's try to figure out a way to get its work back in salary-wise. But again, that's, that's just me, for, you know, so everybody's got on it and kind of things, you know?
Well, you know, I could tell you earlier now, I agree with what you're saying, as far as trying to do something on time, but I'd also like us to be able to do something now. As a one-time thing, just to help out and work on something permanent.
And I think everybody, everybody, I think everybody, you know, or, you know, and I shouldn't say everybody, I haven't talked to everybody, but, you know, talking, you know, talking to Brian, you know, and, and I think we were all, you know, everybody was bringing, yeah, we need to do something at some point. My only problem is, you know, is simply, you know, how, and that's where we've got to, I guess, figure out, you know, where it's at. And again, I, I haven't had a chance to talk with these two ladies today, so we'll, so we'll lay, lay all with it. But that, so that's just kind of what I'm thinking.
I think we want, we always want people to feel valued in, in their pay scale. There's no doubt about that. But you certainly have to look long-term, the best theory issues, and things can change. So I think we've got to take all of those into consideration. But we can jump around if they want to do it again. We just got to figure out what the best way to do it is.
What are your issue about July days, aren't you?
Well, I have, you know, been talking to you, of course, and, and, Mr. Chairman, we, we've discussed a local supplement that would, would, I think, achieve goals that we just talked about. And, you know, if, if we did a one-time supplement, local supplement, again, this year, I know I've talked to each one of you at different times, and talked about the possibility of what I've heard that some other counties have done. And there's different ways to do things. In the past, we have done, say, a percentage on each person's pay. But oftentimes, that percentage for somebody who is at the lower end of the pay scale, it really doesn't amount to much. You know, our vision as a school system is an equitable education for every child. And when you think about it, if we're going to do something monetarily for each one of our employees, I think this time, if we can, and we certainly can, we've looked at our budget, we've looked at the finances. We're in good financial shape right now, and I'm optimistic for the future. If you look at the current tax revenue for this year, some of the things that I know you've talked about that we would want to do for employees, adjusting salary schedules and such as that. I know we've had conversations about that. We can look at as a budget process moving forward and doing those kind of things. But to address, right now, I would like to recommend that we do a five-hundred-dollar, one-time local supplement for every employee in the district. And the way that we would identify five-hundred dollars is the idea that the average teacher's salary is approximately fifty-two, fifty-three thousand dollars in Coffee County. So the average teacher's salary is fifty-two, fifty-three thousand dollars for a Coffee County teacher. Approximately one percent of that would be five-hundred dollars. So what we would be talking about doing is giving each employee the equivalent of a one percent increase for the average teacher in Coffee County. And so therefore, I think it makes sense to move towards, over the next month, to direct our finance department, business department to prepare a five-hundred-dollar payment for every employee in the school district.
That would be a one-time payment, just one time?
One time.
Then next year, we'll look at something else?
Well, and I hope, we hope do something along the track of like Mr. Park was talking about. We wouldn't have to do it as a test. And a part of this is that we are just completing our fifth year of our strategic plan. We're in the middle of our fifth year of our strategic plan, our fifth year as a charter system. And we do receive charter system funding. And that charter system funding has benefited our school district, it's benefited our boys and girls. We've seen improvements, we've seen good things happen, move closer to our mission and destination graduation for college and career in life. But this would be a way to, to incentivize our employees for the good work that they've been doing over the past five years as we move through the charter system process and move towards improving our school system. So this would be a one, one-time event for now.
Something that you'd be thinking about?
You know, just think about it.
So the first is supplement, we could sort of, in a token of appreciation, of what we've gone through versus a charter system type of appreciation?
We, we...
For everything that we have gone...
Annually, we earn around six-hundred eighty thousand dollars in charter system funding. It just so happens, if we consider the one percent based on the average teacher's salary for every employee, it would come out to, what's that number, Mr. Drehus, the one percent?
One percent would be just shy six hundred thousand.
Yeah. So it's basically pretty close to the equivalent of our charter system funding for this year. But that would be because of the work that they've been doing as a district over the last five years. So we can think about it. I'm not, this, of course, is a work session, and that's the intent here, it's just to discuss work. We can come back and talk about it later, maybe, for you two. Got anybody outside, Rob?
No, sir.
All right. Audience participation, we don't have any idea. Executive session. We do need to move to executive session to discuss and deliberate on the appointment of employment compensation, hiring, disbar action, or dismissal of periodic evaluation or rating of a public officer or employee. We also need to discuss property, real estate. We need to consider a matter involving the disclosure of personally identifiable information on employment. Any motion? Ms. Miller? Ms. Block? On favor? We're going to need a motion if you want to make a decision. Ms. Miller? Johnson? On favor? A work session is done.